Yes, Yasewa Jan. Between twenty... Between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two for a steady leave term of two years. After completion of her study, she returned back to the ministry but failed to serve her born term of two years. She vacated her post twenty twenty-three tenth October. And this amount has been accrued. Now, the table here shows how it was done. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight point four zero. Twenty twenty-two, forty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven point eight zero. Twenty twenty-three, fourteen thousand, four hundred and nineteen point two six. Totaling eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five point eight six with added value borne of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and one point fifty-seven. Total in all, one twenty thousand, three hundred and forty-seven point zero three as mentioned. I want to find out from you. The auditors' reports say that the chief director should ensure that this money has been recovered and pays him into auditors' account at the Bank of Ghana. I want to know whether it has been done or it has not been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would defer to the Director of Finance to respond to this. Thank you.
Respectfully, Honorable Chair, as stated in the auditors' report, the ministry have taken the necessary steps to retrieve the funds from the officer by writing to the officer and the guarantor of the officer. Still, we haven't received any response. Some months ago, the ministry even went to the officer's house to go there to find out whether or not he was there, and we were told that he has been, he has travelled outside the jurisdiction. So based on that, the ministry have formally written to the head of service about the status of the unsafe bond so far as officer is concerned.
So if I heard you right, then you want to tell this committee that all effort to trace the person in question is unsustainable as of now?
That is so, Honorable, but we are still pursuing the officer to make sure that the funds are refunded back to the government.
She has a guarantor. Have you been able to contact the guarantor?
Honorable, that is so. We've written to the guarantor. We've done a follow-up by even calling the guarantor. All the response we are getting is she will try and, he will try and contact the daughter to refund the said amount.
My understanding is the guarantors serve as a purpose in case of default, defortment of such terms like that, they come in to, I mean, pay or we held them responsible. Have you taken any action to hold the directors, the guarantors, I mean, accounts for such that they are insured to pay?
Respectfully, Honorable, that is the more reason why the ministry wrote a letter to the head of service for the unnecessary actions to be taken against the guarantor. So as it stands now, it's pending at the head of service, and we are waiting for their direction so far as the guarantor status is concerned, Honorable.
And then I refer to you. Any steps so far after all this taking to ensure that you recover the money? Any steps? Can you tell us when?
Honorable, please, the question again, please.
Any further steps that you've been taking to ensure that we recover this amount? Can you tell the committee, apart from the two months one that you've been taking? Have you taken any steps again?
Respectfully, Honorable, when we receive a letter inviting us to this committee, we even called the guarantor on the phone to remind him that this issue is still pending. What is the way forward? And so he gave us the way that he would do his best to find the daughter to come and refund the said amount. And Honorable, I even have the phone number of the guarantor here with the, with the permission of the committee. If, Honorable, will let me give the number because we are, we are on the media, then everybody will know the steps that we've been taking. And the name of the guarantor is Mr. Kwasi Ampim Obujan. And the phone number too is here with the permission of Mr. Chair, if.
Ask it. Chair. One more, one more than I hand over, please. Did you call the person in question or the, the guarantor?
Respectfully, Honorable, the person is out of the jurisdiction. So it was the guarantor that we called. We tried the person's phone number, it wasn't going through. And that was the reason why we went to the house to find out if, whether or not she could be found and we couldn't find it.
Thank you very much. You know where the guarantor is, right?
That is so, Honorable.
The person who is running away from serving the bond is Miss Yasewa Jan. Isn't that so?
That is so, Honorable.
Yeah. And when did she leave the country?
Honorable, our checks shows that she left the country about more than a year ago, but they didn't give us the exact month that she left.
More than a year ago. Do you have any idea where she's gone to? Either, either US or...
Mr. Chair, we're told that she's gone to the US.
She's gone to the US?
That is so.
Oh, Masa, just get the police. They will find her in the US. Yes. Get the police. Get with our Foreign Affairs also. Let them know. She will probably go and renew her passport. And they will let her know that she owes this amount. Get the police involved. We cannot, the government cannot pay for people to go for steady leave and then they, when they finish, they are scorned. That is not fair. And the guarantor over here too. Let the police visit him. Let the police visit his house. You have the number. You have his name. And I'm sure you have more information on the form than the guarantor signed. If you're going to guarantee for somebody, make sure that person is going to pay. Is he a member of parliament? Is he a government appointee? Look at what he's doing. Abey, na na Yasewa Jan. Don't, get the police involved. And then let us know, let the committee know within thirty days what, what has happened on this one. Ah, Clark, please take note of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if you, if you check the, the report, it's also telling us that under paragraph twenty-ten, management response, no response was received from management. Now, the chief director is here. You will notice that the auditors recommend that if they fail to retrieve this money from Ms. Jan, the chief director ought to pay. So there are legal steps and avenues available to the chief director to be able to retrieve this money. Once he is here, Mr. Chair, respectfully, can we find out from him what he has done and what steps he's taken to pay back this money? Because the onus is on him to pay it back.
Chief Director is sitting here.
Honorable Chair, the Chief Director is here to respond, but I, in the Finance Director's response, he made it clear that they have made efforts and written to the head of service. The Chief Director...
Respectfully, Minister, we are not interested in the process. We say that further to that, there's a recommendation, and it's clear that if this fails, the chief director pays.
Honorable Member.
And I'm also saying that even from the auditor's own rendition, the management led by the chief director failed to respond to the auditors.
Honorable Member.
Yes.
I've made a ruling on this. They should get the police involved, and we want a response within thirty days. If we don't get any response, we'll go, we'll go to the next step.
Thank you.
The next infraction is on paragraph twenty-eleven. And Honorable Nakoya will take that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This infraction is on two-one-one, page four-four-eight. It's on, on earned salaries. Contrary to the Regulation ninety-two of the Public Financial Management Regulation twenty-nineteen, audits of the payroll records disclosed that three employees who vacated posts between December twenty-twenty-two and December twenty-twenty-three were validated and paid on earned salaries totaling twenty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-three, four-nine pesos. The details below Ali Kanga Nuhu set up here in Cornelis, Delhi. Now, I would want to find out, can you inform the committee of the status of this observation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the Director of Finance would respond to this.
Respectfully, Mr. Chair, in respect of these issues, all the three staff that have been mentioned in this report were at post as at the time that they were paid the salaries. But when the auditors were conducting the audit, due to misfiling, we couldn't provide the necessary information to them at that time. But, Mr. Chair, after diligent search by the team of the ministry, we were able to recover all the necessary evidence and same were brought to the attention of the auditors. But the issues that auditors raised was, it has already been captured in the auditors' general report, and it's not within their purview to do anything, and we need to appear before this honorable committee, for this honorable committee to give a direction. So, Honorable Chair, we are here at your guidance as you so direct what needs to be done for these issues to be resolved.
Honorable Member, auditors, have they provided the necessary documents?
Honorable Chair, we are yet to have documentation or evidence to the fact that these staff exist. What happened was that the audit was done, the, an observation was issued. We were not given any evidence that they existed. And I think that from engaging with the team, they have asked that if they say they exist, then they should produce them for us to ascertain that indeed they are staff that are post. But we don't have that at the moment. And so we cannot say whether what they are saying is what actually exists or not.
You said these people were employed at the time?
That is so, Honorable.
And you brought the people here?
As we speak, they are no more at post.
They are no more at post?
That is so.
So you are challenging the auditor's findings over here?
That is so, Honorable. That's why, Honorable, I said at the direction of this committee.
But, but sir, sir, when they came in and audited you, they did the next exit interview with you, didn't they?
It was done, Honorable.
And at the exit interview, they mentioned this to you?
That is so, Honorable.
And it was on your management letter?
That is so, Honorable.
So if you had any dispute, how come you didn't, you had thirty days for you to respond, didn't they?
That is so, Honorable.
Why didn't you do that within the thirty days?
Honorable, that is the one reason why we admit as at the time the report was being issued, the necessary evidence to back our assertion wasn't available. But after diligent search, we were able to recover all the evidence to back.
When did you find the evidence?
Respectfully, Honorable, about three months ago.
About three months ago? Why didn't you share that with the auditors?
Respectfully, Honorable, I, we brought it to the notice of the auditors. As I said earlier on, they said since the report has been captured, notice general report, there is nothing that they can do unless we appear before this committee for our side of the story, for Honorable Members to give a direction so far as.
You are the finance officer?
That is so, Honorable.
Director of Finance, but you know that is not it. Once you find it after the fact, you need to give it to the auditors. So what I would have done over here is ask the auditors, they claim that they've shown you this evidence. Do you have it? They would, they would say yes or no? Or you enjoy coming on national television? The whole country is watching us, Masa. Do you have the evidence here?
That is so, Honorable, Mr. Chair.
Hand it over to the auditors. They will review it and they will let us know whether these are genuine or they will accept these ones. So they will let you know. But next time, give it to them before you get here.
Honorable, we take a clue from the chair.
And if you want to be on national TV, let's do it on a different level. Thank you very much. Honorable Minister, you guys are discharged.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Now let's call Ministry of Roads and Highways. And Clark, please swear them in.
Please, don't sit in there. You are also to be sworn in, so if you can, yeah.
Aye. Swear by the Almighty God. That the evidence I shall give before this committee. Touching the matter in issue. Shall be the truth. The whole truth. And nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Honorable Minister, can you and your delegation introduce yourself?
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. My name is Alhassan Suhini, Member of Parliament for the Tamalino constituency and Deputy Minister for the Ministry of Roads and Highways. And I bring you greetings from my minister, Honorable Kwame Govins Abuja, who is Member of Parliament for the good people of Adaklu. He is currently attending the Tikkat Conference with His Excellency the President in Japan and would have wished to be here himself. Thank you very much. My directors from the ministry will take turns to introduce themselves, starting with the Chief Director.
Good afternoon. I'm Samo Okusi Akwagumo, Acting Chief Director for the Ministry of Roads and Highways. Thank you.
I'm Kogu Immanuel, Director of Finance, Ministry of Roads and Highways.
Good afternoon. I'm James Samogodford, Director, Department of Urban Roads.
My name is Samuel Yaobanini, Acting Director, Department of Fida Roads.
I'm Engineer Akwesi Asamoah, Head of Planning, Department of Fida Roads.
Thank you very much. Your infraction starts from paragraph nineteen-twelve, abandoned projects, and Honorable Chair will take care of them.
Thank you. This infraction is to do with abandoned projects in the Ashanti region. The auditors noted during their inspection of the roads that the Department of Urban Roads in Kumasi expended a total amount of sixty-two million, three hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two point nine-nine CDs on the projects, but also found that they have been abandoned for close, for forty-eight to sixty, fifty-six months. Management response attributed this abandonment to force majeure delays in IPC payments amongst others. And there was a recommendation for the regional director to report to the head office on the update of these projects and also to give priority to the completion of these projects. Can you please update the committee on the progress of this?
Honorable Chair, the Director of Urban Roads will take that question. Thank you, with your permission.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair. Yes, indeed, a number of projects have been committed through the Department of Urban Roads, and some are indeed abandoned as we speak. The, the department has looked at our project portfolio and has made a recommendation to the ministry for rationalization. As the report indicated, some have been delayed for forty-eight to fifty-six months, and we believe that it's about time that some of them are truncated or terminated so that we can repackage them and get a job done. Because it has not become very prudent for us to continue with this length of delay. Thank you.
Your reasons that you gave, they are all lumped up. I am particularly conversant with the macro routes, which happens to be in my constituency, and I know how long it's taking for this road to be done. It's been abandoned for a long time. Could you please help us assign reasons to some of the routes and the reasons for delay? If you could do that, please.
Honorable Chair, I think with that particular route and some of the other routes, the main reason for the delay has been our inability to make timely payments to the contractors. So due to the lack of payment, they've not been able to come back to sites. But as I was trying to explain, because of the length of delay, it's become even more expensive to continue the projects in this present state because we would be paying for interest instead of for work done. So it's in our interest to truncate and terminate these projects and have a new repackage projects which will be more worth our while. Thank you.
Could you please tell the committee, give timelines as to when you are looking at getting this repackaged?
Recommendation has been made, but as we know, subject to the availability of funds, we would repackage them and recommit the projects. Thank you.
So you can't give any specific time?
Hopefully before the end of the year.
Honorable Member, Ministry of Urban Roads is saying that, ah, not Ministry, sorry, Department of Urban Roads, right? It says it's because of money. And your road was thirty-four point, thirty-eight point eight percent complete, and now they have to look for money. If it was like eighty-four point sixty-nine percent like the one in Adaku Quachi and Adaku Jachi and, and Kwamo, that one, that one, then it means, that one was eighty, eighty-four, almost eighty-five percent. So waiting on the ministry, waiting on Ministry of Finance to give them some money. We all have roads in our constituencies. So let's prey on that one.
Thank you very much, Chair.
I just told Chairman that we already have money under the big push, thirteen point nine billion Ghana CDs. And so, yes, thirteen point nine billion Ghana CDs. It's no small money. And so if it's special projects and there are some projects sitting down abandoned and we can cut down our losses and complete them, I think, Minister, Deputy Minister, if you can send the message across to your minister that I know there's thirteen point nine billion in the budget for the big push and the big push happens to be roads. And so if we can tweak it to make sure we cut down the losses and the interest payment and complete some of these routes rather than starting new routes from the scratch, I'd be very grateful. I know you pass it on because you are my friend.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Chair, I, I thank you for the message that you are sending to my boss through me. I just wish to say that, yes, there is thirteen billion. You have worked at the Ministry of Finance, and I hope you still have some relationships there that you can use to ensure that the, the releases are timely. And then when the releases are timely and full, I can assure you, like the Department of Urban Roads Director has said, that when the funds are available, we will prioritize some of these projects. Indeed, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I do know that my minister has publicly stated that projects that are eighty percent and above done will be prioritized for completion. And it is something that we want to take on board. Thank you very much.
The next infraction also talks about delayed projects. And Honorable Frankie Abou will take that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The infraction is on paragraph one-nine-one-seven, two-one-nine-two-zero. And the auditors are saying that you paid four-hundred-and-eighty-million Ghana CD and one-point-seven-million dollars to thirteen contractors in the Ashanti region to undertake road projects. And according to them, the, the contract has delayed up to two years, ranging from one month to twenty-four months. They attributed the, the delay to lack of commitment or the path of the contractors pending approval for extension of time, additional works to be done, and, and other things. So the auditors recommended that you should, the director of, the regional director in the Ashanti region, Urban Roads, should update the head office on the status of the projects and also advise the head office to ensure, to prioritize the completion of the existing project, the thirteen delayed projects, before thinking of awarding any new contracts. So the first question is, the director is not here. I want to know if the head office has been updated. That's the first question.
Honorable Chair, yes, the head office has been updated of the status of all our routes in the country, and that includes the ones in Ashanti region. Thank you.
So my second question is, the auditors' recommendation was clear that no new contracts should be awarded until and unless the existing thirteen has been, have been done. So the question is, have you awarded any new contract or attempted to award any new contract after the receipt of the auditors' recommendation?
Honorable Chair, I do not think we've awarded any contract after this. But as I said earlier, we are in the process of rationalizing our project portfolio so that we'll have real value for money and try and complete what we can immediately complete before committing more. Thank you.
My last one. If you look at Appendix M, page five-four-one, one of the reasons why the contracts are delayed is the fact that there's lack of commitment on the path of the contractors. If you look at item number five and six, Prime Sec Ghana Limited, the contract was supposed to have started on the, on the fifteenth of September, twenty-twenty-one, to be completed fourteen September, twenty-twenty-three. If you look at percent of completion, it's zero. Number six, the same thing. Number six, the same thing, completion is zero. So if you are saying that there doesn't see any commitment on the part of the contractors, what prevents you from invoking the clauses in the contract to terminate and reward to somebody who can do the work?
Yeah, Honorable Chair, thank you very much for the question. I think as part of the rationalization, a number of projects are to be determined, or let's say terminated. Our project portfolio is in excess of eight hundred projects and we have, we've made recommendations to the ministry to reduce this to less than three hundred. And this includes a number of projects which the contractors have not shown adequate commitment for them to be terminated. So it is being considered along those lines. Thank you.
Chairman, thank you. My last one. So what practical measures have we put in place to ensure that these thirteen delayed contracts are completed on time?
Honorable Chair, the contractors have been written to, to know what challenges, peculiar challenges that they have that we don't know of. But generally, once the contractor has not shown enough commitment, the recommendation is made for the project to be terminated and repackaged for another contractor to show better commitment to complete the project for the beneficiary communities. Thank you.
Okay, Honorable Member, I'm sure there were some contractors that the ministry pays some money to that never even started the work. And I'm sure, I hope, and I'm sure you go after them. So that those who collected the money and didn't do any work, you hold them up to public accounts or whatever it needs to be, they need to cough up the money. You can't take a buying sticker like that. The next infraction is on paragraph nineteen twenty-one and it to be taken by Honorable Duke William Alan Kwame Amuakwata Oforiata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the infraction at paragraph nineteen twenty-one, the issues here are thirty-six outstanding projects valued at one point five six two billion CDs in the Western Region. And you can find that on Appendix N. These projects are at various stages of completion, from seven percent to as high as ninety-nine percent. My question to the officer in charge, how long before the audit was this project at ninety-nine percent to completion? Or work done, sorry.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. With your permission, the director, Chief Director for Department for Fida Roads will answer that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please, I want a clarification on the last part of what the Honorable just said.
My question was, the road, one road here, Mutu to Apikrum, sixteen kilometers, is registered at ninety-nine percent work done. And I'm asking, how long before the audit was this the case?
This project, per our, the requirement is substantially completed. I mean, a project from above eighty-five percent is substantially completed. It can be, we can even issue substantial completion certificate for this project. So in our view, it is essentially completed.
So when would the, a certificate will be issued and when would that be done? Certificate of completion, when would that be done?
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do the nursery inspection on the project and issue the required certificates.
So you are yet to do an inspection of completion?
Yes.
So why the delay?
It's completed though, like I said, so we'll check and then, and then get back.
Yes, please.
Sir, did you say that you would check and get back?
Honorable, what I said was that, like I was still maintaining, this project is completed. I mean, to the one percent, it's essentially completed, this project.
Were you aware of the audit report? Had you read the audit report or had it been brought to your notice on this project?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And it says ninety-nine percent?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's completed, Mr. Chair.
I will come back to it later on, but let's move on. Honorable, are you done? Okay, go ahead.
There's a second road which is also ninety-four percent done, work done. When would that road be signed off or be completed? The road is Ekropom to Adansi Road, Wassa Ekropom to Adansi Road.
Yeah, Honorable, this road is also substantially completed.
At ninety-four percent?
Yes, ninety-four percent completed.
Yeah, so when did it attain ninety-four percent before the audit? That's what I want to know.
No, at the time of the audit, it was ninety-four percent complete. That is how it is recorded, ninety-four percent complete. So at that time, at ninety-four percent, it is substantially completed. So what you see in such a project may be, it may be a road marking or a signpost. But those works, that road is completed, it is fast night, it is open to traffic and maybe yes, and still I, we have not really to not unpack on the functionality of the road.
That's my next question. Management?
Honorable, Honorable Chair, if I may, when, when a road project is said to be ninety-four percent, ninety-five percent complete, the understanding in the industry is that what is left usually are just the road markings, the road furnishings and all that. But at ninety-four, ninety-five percent, it means that it is substantially complete. That's, that's, that's the understanding. And, and so when the audit is done and it is captured, that it is ninety-four percent complete. If you ask us today and we tell you it is complete, it means that after the audit, perhaps the road markings and other road furnishings may have been added. Thank you very much.
The auditors recommended that the regional director should ensure that the head office is updated on the current status of the projects and also advise the head office to give priority to the completion of the projects before new projects are awarded. Has that been done, please?
Yeah, Honorable, yeah, we have took, we took that advice from the auditors and we are prioritizing those projects before we embark on any new projects.
Auditors, please, can you confirm that this has been done? Have you been updated?
Yes, the update has been done. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. You are done, right? The man with five names. Okay, the next infraction is on paragraph nineteen twenty-seven. And Honorable Kenedu will take that one.
Chairman, thank you very much. Some of these are not abandoned routes, but they are however delayed projects. There are four road projects in the Sehuyu also, Bibeni, and there are also township routes which have been delayed. If the ministry can tell us the status of these roads, whether work has begun on them again?
Please, go ahead.
Honorable Chair, these works, my understanding is that works have resumed on the projects in the Sehuyu also district, municipally, sorry. Thank you.
Have you by yourself verified? Because you said you understand this. So that means you probably not sure, but you presume that work has begun on those ones?
Yes, Honorable Chair, my, I said my understanding because the contractor has brought in a recent certificate that I'm aware of. So I know definitely work has been done, but I have not personally visited the site. But based on the documentation, it is my understanding that work has resumed. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, once work has resumed, I believe that you just would have to follow up for completion because I think these are very important rules that will serve Ghana and the citizens. So just keep your eye on them. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph nineteen twenty-three. And Honorable Nana OCAJ.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Chief Director, this is about page four two seven, unrecovered performance security for non-performance. It's totally thirty million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine Ghana CDs. Please, have you seen it? Okay. The auditors said that our review of the contract records disclosed that the department neither took action to recover the total performance securities from four contractors who failed to complete or execute contracts for the upgrade and rehabilitation of Fida Roads worth one twenty-three million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and six Ghana CDs, nor terminated the respective contracts for non-performance. The contractors were City Construction Company Limited and the guarantor was Phoenix Insurance, GeoData Engineering Limited, Serene Insurance, Memphis Metropolitan Limited, Serene Insurance, Myten Limited, Phoenix Insurance, all totaled thirty point nine five three million. The auditors recommended that the regional director should terminate the contracts and recover the amount of thirty million from the insurance companies that issued the performance securities and pay same into the auditor general's review recovery account at the Bank of Ghana. We also recommended that the regional director should report the contractors to Public Procurement Authority and other bodies for necessary actions, sanctions. Chief Director, my first question to you is, have you terminated the contracts? The contracts, and if, if so, have you given evidence to the auditors? That's my first question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, there are quite a number of non-performing contracts. So in our review, we look at whether the contract needs to be terminated first. So if it's in our view, we think the contracts need to be terminated, we recommend it to the awarding authority, which is the entity tender committees, to adjudicate and therefore they are awarded. So we go back to them for them to terminate same. They look at two or three issues. Do we owe the contractors? First, they look at the percentage of completion. Projects which are about seventy percent, sixty percent completed and the employer or the government of Ghana owes them some money. Maybe they've put in a interim certificate, number one, number two, and number three, and they've not been paid. The entity committee is always reluctant, even though per our recommendations, we say this contract has been dormant or that, they are reluctant to terminate the contract. In some cases, everywhere some of them have been terminated, the contractors put in a petition or an appeal.
Chief Director, have you terminated, has it been done? Yes, no?
We can terminate only if the entity, we, the entities, so the entity says no. The, some of the contracts cannot be terminated. So there's nothing we can do because they are being owed large sums of money. And therefore, they weigh their options and said, well, we should just stay and hope that they are paid and they go back to the site to complete. So, and if we don't terminate the contract, we cannot recover, we cannot call for the performance, we cannot call for the security or the monies that are due out of the security. So first, there should be a termination, then we proceed to call for the, for the monies due.
So have you informed the auditors about this?
Yes.
Auditor, please, are you aware?
Yes, Honorable Chair, they have informed us. When you even look at the report, they made a comment about the fact that two of them have started some work but failed to complete. And then there were others that did not even start at all. And so per their own analysis, they have come back to us that terminating it would be difficult and that has been communicated to us.
Chief Director, can you tell the committee, the other two companies, who didn't start the work at all? Yeah, Honorable, the other two contractors who didn't start, where they are in a bit also caught up by the observation my colleague asked. Honestly, even one of them, as we speak now, has virtually been awarded a judgment that, an arbitral award against the state because the employer was defaulting in, in obligations under contract by the same contractor on other projects. So the point was that when we see with this non-performance information, the idea was that the cost to the employer, even though it was on this project, the same employer had reneged on other projects being executed by the same contractor. So when they have been challenged on this particular contract, you are beat hamstring in terms of taking on the contractor. Because as we speak now, one of the contractors, maybe the ministry can speak to it, but I know one of the contractors, because of the challenge from the employer in terms of settling delayed IPCs, they have taken on the employer. So they didn't perform this. But when you, when you go to the entity, they also raise this issue. Are you, do you have collateral issues with the contract? Are there other contracts that you have? So that is the challenge we are having, having to take action on some of these contracts.
Okay. Honorable Member, you didn't, did you get the answer you needed?
No, please. What I'm saying is that it may be the case that street listen, so you may say this contractor is working on this project. But the truth is that the same contractor is working on about five, six projects and this same, excuse me, this, the same employer has also reneged on our assist projects for which this same contractor is undertaking. So when you want to take action, even where he has defaulted, you also may be minded about the remedy available to the contract on the other projects that the same employer has devoted. So it's a kind of a balancing act because he has about seven projects where the employer has virtually defaulted for a better way. Then there's this one project, he has remedies and assist projects. You have remedy on the single project. and assist projects. You have remedy on the single project. So you have to do a balancing act, so that we don't necessarily compromise the state, because his remedy is higher against the state than what the state has on that single project.
Honorable member, I mean, to explain it in street terms, government hasn't paid him. So when he's talking about employer, employer, it's all the government didn't pay. And if you didn't pay, how can you squeeze him on another project that you haven't paid either?
Honorable Chair, I think you have put it succinctly. That is the crux of the matter. We appreciate that no two contracts are the same, and you don't extend the same treatment to the different contracts. But in the ministry, you operate based on relationships that these contractors have with the ministry. And based on that understanding, contractors go to work with the hope that they will get paid. So where they are owed on other projects, and they have remedies they can seek legally, and they don't do that. Where they also, you know, fall short on one, you fall short on six, and they have not taken you to court to demand their pound of flesh. If they fall short on one, and you demand your pound of flesh on that, then you will be putting the state at risk if they also demand their pound of flesh on the six that you also fail to, you know, make good on. And so it is perhaps based on this, that the entity tender committee usually will advise that we hasten slowly on recovering the securities that we are entitled to. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The infraction, disbursement not adequately supported. That's nineteen thirty-two. Okay. Okay. So it is recommended that the regional director should ensure that the accountant refund ten thousand one hundred and forty-seven thousand into the account of the Bank of Ghana. Failure means that the regional director should pay. I want to ask the accountant general, what's, how far with this? Thank you. The regional director, sorry.
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. At the time of the audit, the receipts were not available. However, subsequent to the audit, we've found the receipts and submitted them to the auditors for their review. Thank you.
Why are the receipts not available?
Honorable Chair, the receipts are available now. At the time of the audit, it's when my understanding is that they had been misfiled. But subsequent to the audit, they've identified and given it to the auditors for their review.
You may want to find out from the auditors.
Yeah, so auditors, how far with this? Thank you.
So Honorable Chair, the disbursement has actually been supported now, adequately supported now.
The next infraction is on paragraph nineteen thirty-five. Honorable Sebastian Day.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. The next, this particular infraction has to do with an earned salary. And it concerns a gentleman called Mr. Vincent Akka, Akanpai, an assistant engineer with staff number ID one five eight six nine eight four, who vacated five hundred and eighty-nine cedis, thirty pesos, for August twenty twenty-four and September twenty twenty-four. The auditors recommended that the regional director should recover the earned salary with an interest at the Bank of Ghana prevailing rate and pay same into the auditor general's recovery account at the Bank of Ghana, feeling which the regional director and the validators should pay. The question is, what management in response to the auditor said, now my question is, how far has this amount been recovered? If not, why? And may I also ask whether the...
An earned salaries have been recovered and paid into government chests. And the receipts have been given to the auditor general for confirmation, Mr. Vincent Akanpai. So it has been complied with. Management in the region informed head office for direction, which was duly given, and they've contacted them for the monies to be repaid into government chest, which has been done. Thank you.
Can the auditors help us by confirming this in this statement?
Honorable Chair, we can confirm that a total of nine thousand and eighty-four point four zero has been recovered. That is one thousand four hundred and ninety-five above what we actually recommended. So it means that it has been recovered with the interest in addition. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next infraction is on paragraph nineteen thirty-eight, and Honorable Dr. Jessal would take that one.
Thank you, Chair. Honorable Chair, this one has to do with roads in the Yapa East region. Mr. Chair, the auditors noted that between January twenty twenty-three and December twenty twenty-three, the accountant failed to deduct our workers. Mr. Chair, the regional director was recommended to do two things. One, to appoint a fund manager. In fact, to ensure that a fund manager is appointed, and then two others.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first one, which is the appointment of a fund manager, has been done. The agreement has been submitted to the auditors for their further action. So that one has been done. Thousand five hundred and ninety-two point two-two has also been recovered, according to the auditors.
Mr. Chair, can the auditors confirm this?
Honorable Chair, what we can confirm is that the fund manager has been appointed. That we know. But as to whether they have remitted the five thousand five hundred and ninety-two point two-two, that we don't have the evidence.
So, Mr. Chair, does the department have any evidence to the fact that you've remitted the five thousand five hundred and ninety-two?
These have been paid to casual workers. So we are trying to recover those ones from them, because those amounts have already been paid to the casual workers. So we hope to recover them and serve and transfer them to the fund managers.
So what steps are you taking to recover them and then transfer to the fund manager?
So what we'll do is that we're going to, there are going to be deductions from the casual workers, but they are still in place. So they are going to be made, there are going to be deductions from their salaries, so that we can transfer to them, to the newly appointed fund managers, because they are still in place.
When was this brought to your notice, and when do you intend to start the deduction?
We can only do the deduction after the appointment. With acceptance, now we can now effect the deductions and transfer to the fund managers.
When was this acceptance? When did it come to your notice that the fund managers have now accepted the appointment?
It was a bit challenging getting fund managers to manage some of those miniscule amounts, because they couldn't be able to engage them. So hopefully, the deduction should start in a month or two. But it was just recently, we managed to engage the fund manager. I think about the month, it may even be less, because it was not easy. We virtually had to now prevail on hedge, hedge trust to accept the offer. Because as I said, these are casual offers, and for them, running these accounts in terms of the overhead costs may not have been justified those in one. But we finally managed to prevail on them, and we will start the deductions immediately. Yeah, so this, we have copies with the auditors, why didn't you have the, but it's here. That's about fifteenth of this month. So they are just about to take, it's fifteenth of August. Yes, yes, five days. It was not easy, Chairman. It's not easy getting a fund manager. This is five thousand for twelve months. So you can imagine.
Managing the money, those deductions would rather be counterproductive. Is that the reason why?
No. What we were saying was that it was effective to managing such, because of the efforts they have to go to. But we finally managed to prevail on hedge, which happens to be, I'll say, one of us.
Why were they not very receptive? Is it because of the quantum involved? What is the reason?
Of course. So for some of them, it was a bit, the proposal we made to some of them, it was, it was the quantum and the cost in managing.
Now that we have the fund manager, what steps are you putting in place to ensure that these deductions can be carried out and paid on their behalf?
Chairman, we'll start the deductions, and then we'll group whatever losses, or the five thousand, that was not pension, because it's the same workers who virtually have enjoyed what should have gone into that. So we'll cover those amounts and pay into their tier-two pension.
You know how important this is to the workers, tier-two deductions. It's very, very important. So as soon as, now you have the fund manager, you need to keep the auditors updated on this.
Thank you, Chairman.
I think with that, we have a public interest question from OPK.
Thank you. Minister, one has to do with the Pokwase to Inzamam Road. In recent times, there's been a lot of news surrounding the Pokwase Road. In fact, I use the road virtually every week. I mean, use the Ebri Road, because it would take you, let's say, one and a half hour to get from Inkokoro to, let's say, Inzamam. But you end up doing two hours on that stretch. Just this week, we've seen that the contractor is on site. Is he just there to do some patches? Or is there to ensure completion of the work? I mean, we need that commitment from you.
Honorable Chair, I would have been surprised if the Inzamam Pokwase Road did not come up for conversation motorist on that stretch. It's one of the hot potatoes that we inherited at the ministry. By the time we got to the ministry, the contractor, like many other contractors across the country, had already abandoned site due to non-payment. And we have been working with the financemen, some of these very critical projects. Fortunately, the finance minister has been cooperative. In the past, even before releases were made, we had meetings with some of these contractors, and based on assurances, some of them agreed to go back to site, for which we are very grateful. Some haven't been able to because of obvious reasons. But this particular contractor, fortunately, as we speak, has received some payment and has now adequately mobilized back to site. And it is our hope that before the end of this year, some significant improvement would have been noticed on that road. And so it's not just, and it's not going to be a nine-day wonder, he's back to site to continue with the projects. And we are very confident that it will now be within shadow. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. I commend you for your sincerity, first by apologizing to the good people of this country. I mean, it's been a worry. Seen choo-choo drivers, truck drivers, everybody complained on that, and would urge him, with or without money, at least he should try and do something. And I know that government will release the funds. Second question has to do with Koku Roads. When this new government took over, we saw that you transferred the liabilities of Koku Road, some twenty-one billion, from Ghana Cocoa Board to the Ministry of Roads and Highways. In March twenty twenty-five, there was a joint committee that was set up by the government. And this is a committee from the Ministry of Roads and Highways and that of Cocoa Board, to normalize or to look at the knots and everything and tighten them. I want to find out from you, what is the state? I was in the constituency this week. There's a major Koku Road from Formanso to Atubukromi, my place, and it stalled for like one year. This is not, this is a project, a challenge that you inherited. And I would not sit here to do politics with it. And I would not sit here to do politics with it.